And uh.
Like she's still learning a whole lot, like what now about the scope? I'm mayor man, I have. Like they need to drive.
Then I did ultrasound, it had any blood holes first, but and now tomorrow I gotta go for an MRI.
We don't carry a whole bunch.
Why are they doing, why are they doing that?
Okay, afraid of. Some tendon or ligament damage. And they're gonna check that.
Our oldest.
And if I did, then they're gonna wanna.
I stood like this.
Do some kind of.
I'll do.
Third drink.
Yeah. She smoked it right, ran about twenty yards and fell over, no, and then it just said anyway. Okay. So my buddy's dad was with us and he goes, you take her back before we are. So then she turns around and goes, Dad.
There's. There's our person who tells us that we're live or not.
It's in the park on.
We're live.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, please, so um, we've got uh, I didn't even take account yet. We've got six here. Yeah, and so uh, we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
And to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the agenda presented here tonight, does anybody have any discussion about that? We need to approve it.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Second by Zach, all those in favor? Six. Um, move on to uh, administrative report from Ms. Williams.
Just before everybody starts, just want to share uh, really quickly, we've typically done the administrative reports at the end. Uh, we used to have all administrators just share a little bit, we have uh, transitioned that where we'll have each school uh, present a little bit more in detail. Uh, during a particular month during the year, we've had the middle school present a couple of months ago. This is will be the high school, uh, appreciate the approach from Ms. Williams this today, uh, she'll explain what she's doing. We moved it up in the agenda instead of waiting to the end, so when our students are done, they don't have to sit through an entire board meeting, they are welcome to leave, you're also welcome to stay for the entire board meeting, so. I mean.
Okay, um, yeah, I. Can talk about things, but if we decided this today, we're gonna book the CDL program and let you know how that's going. Um, working with the kids to speak for themselves and explaining to you maybe to prepare something to explain what what they are growing and. And Tom Williams, Williams is having, you can't even put it into words, and I think you'll hear. So.
Come on up.
This is Cindy Williams, taking the ball, Tyler Jenkins, and Hilton Ray. Right on this day.
You can right up here and get face the audience.
Yeah, right there in front of the camera.
They can all come out together, they can all come up together. It's good. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cindy Williams, some of you may know me and some of you may not. Either way, I'm a senior this year at North Putnam High School, and this board has blessed me with the opportunity to be in the CDL A class. And today I want to talk about the importance of that class. Now, when you think of a CDL, you think of the people behind the wheel. When I think of CDL, I think of the people that are driving those green carts that you probably get stuck behind and roll your eyes at. That driver has their CDL. Now, hitting even closer to home, the dump truck in that parking lot out there that's hauling our rock back and forth, they have their CDL as well. And without that, this building would not be standing here. So their impact on this community is absolutely immeasurable. Now, let's look at the bigger picture like Tom tells us to do in class. The clothes that you were wearing, the paper you're writing on, the phones that you're holding, and the food that you're looking forward to after this is all thanks to someone behind that wheel. Now, we would not be able to succeed as a country or a town with the people, without the people with their CDLs. This goes hand in hand with the report from chucking.org that says that the industry will need to hire around one point one million new CDL drivers in this decade alone. This CDLA class at our own school will provide sixteen new fresh minds to the industry this year alone. Now, what do you think that'll do down the road metaphorically and literally? And now, all of this has been rehearsed as I drive to school or as I sit in the gear stand and wait for that twelve point to walk out. But this last part is just straight from my heart. This class is not where I'm gonna sit and learn about some guy with a wig and a big nose who wrote a poem or rode his horse into town or something. This class is teaching me how to be a successful part of our community in the, in the country as a whole. It's teaching me how to shift gears, how to be productive, and how to learn in a different way, which is behind the wheel instead of sitting on a desk. Now, like I said, this isn't any class, we're not learning just reading and math, we're learning how to shift gears, how to hu- hook and hunt hook a trailer. We're learning how to record our hours, and we're learning how to survive in the industry, thanks to Tom Williams. Now, we're learning how to carry the weight of the world on our backs or on our trailer. We're also learning how to be the future of our town in America, and I thank you all for the opportunity that you have provided for us, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Who's next?
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, uh, my name is Tyler Jenkins, I'm a senior here. Senior here at North Putnam. I'm honored to stand up here and talk about this CDL class and program, that's first year, uh, first year member going through it. Um, there's some points I want to hit on that are really beneficial to this program and some points that are very, are very, that need to be addressed, and I know there's some circumstances that we can't help with, especially with the construction out going on in the parking lot. Uh, to start out with, this sets up, this CDL sets us apart from everybody else, it gives us something to fall back on as a vocational job or skill that we have, so we say our career does not go the way we want it to go, um. Uh, you know, this makes us more marketable for every other job that, you know, construction drivers, dump truck drivers, delivery trucks, garbage trucks, um, even the school bus, you know, we need school bus drivers here in North Putnam, I see it all the time online, you guys are, yeah, hiring, um, you know.
One more.
Yeah. Now, this allows us to put, boost our human capital, uh, to put on our resumes, to explore new ideas, um. It's not an easy task, you guys might think, oh, they're just, it's not a Mac, no, it's not an easy task to drive those semi, sixty feet of vehicle, uh. You know, people don't see you, you think they do because you have a big truck, they don't, they don't see you at all, um. You know, the hands-on learning we get, not just sitting in that classroom right over there, but the hands-on learning that we get to go out and drive that semi, uh, being able to sit down, maybe more comfortable in a sixty foot vehicle, being able to be able to maintain, uh, shift through the whole gear, old gears and be able to do that, you know? Most of us in that class, they weren't able to drive a manual, me myself, myself included, I wasn't able to drive a manual, but being able to learn that and having that on our uh, resumes as we grow up to be uh, older and have different jobs going forward, you know? We've also encountered a lot of obstacles through this uh, journey in the first three months of our s- uh, year. Uh, one, the simulator, you know, that would help really tremendously with people who aren't the best at shifting, yet uh, as people are out driving, people could be on the simulator driving, uh, practicing through different conditions that it's on, um. And yes, due to conditions of the construction, it's hard for us to drive during the school days, so we take our time and our instructor's time, which we are very appreciative to drive in the South Park Mall in the weekend, to do our range exercises, to advance our skills in the CDL program. Uh, looking down the road at Park Heritage, they got two semis, two courses to practice on, we got one semi, no course, no simulator, and uh, sixteen students to have Tom and Jeff take care of when they have five, and they can have more seat time, would be more comfortable in the semi and be able to go past their CDL test, um. I hope you guys all take this into consideration of what we, I mean, I know it's the first year of this program, and as we look on to further this program, I hope you guys take this in consideration of how to uh, be able to provide for more kids that are able to take this program, and as my final thought, you know, as those challenges have we faced through the first three months of school, this program has really been the best that has come to our foot, you know, it's brought a lot of hype and a lot of back to our community, and people are excited to take this program because our wonderful teachers who put a lot of time and effort and expertise into our knowledge so that we can learn how to do it semi, um. And I'd like to thank the sponsors who put this all together, takes a, takes a lot for the bias semi and everything, uh, and whoever had a hand, I know each and every one of you voted for this class, and I'm grateful that you guys uh, said yes to bring this class to North Putnam, um. Uh, thank you guys all for letting me speak here tonight for this valuable program, it means a lot for each of us, each sixteen students, even the two teachers, so they ought to showcase what we like to learn about, thank you guys.
Hey, I'll address, uh, thank you, Mr. Jenkins, you can come up, I'll address a couple of things real quick, he is correct, um, that uh, we are, we do not have our simulator yet, but I think we're two weeks out next week, uh, so our simulator will be delivered next week. Looking forward to kids being able to get that seat time that's so important, uh, and that we believe that it's important to invest in. Also, again, correct, the construction does cause some issues, but we are working on a good path and we're extending some uh, time, uh, space out uh, east, so we can have a good turnaround space, uh, our maintenance team is working on that. And then when construction's done, we do not need that full north side parking lot because student parking is shifted to the south, so we'll have another uh, turnaround space there as well, so we have some plans in place, and again, but like Mr. Higgins said, we, we can, uh, we'll continue to look for additional ways to improve, so, well done. You're up.
Good evening, my name is Caitlin Hall, I am one of the only two girls in the new CDL class, hard to believe, sound rough, a guy. Tonight I'm gonna speak on our amazing CDL teacher, Tom Williams, and everything he has taught us so far. Many things, getting your CDL is easy, you know, all you have to take care of is the truck, make sure it's clean, you know? But there's so much more than that, we all learn many things in and out of class, we all learn about our hours of service, filling out a logbook, and study very hard on all three of the tests that we need to pass our um, learner's permit. So for the hours of service, the driver will need to fill out, um, how much time that they have driven, and then they'll have to take off so many hours after that. So ratios are, if a driver drives for eleven hours, then they have to take off ten hours. Or if the driver drives fourteen, or they only have fourteen hours to drive a day, but they can still uh, work, but they can, they can still work that day, but they can only drive for fourteen hours. As for the weekly limit, the driver may not drive for more than sixty hours in seven consecutive days or seventy hours in eight consecutive days, and after the sixty to seventy um, hour driving limit, the driver must take thirty-four hours off back. Drivers must also fill out a daily logbook, so a daily logbook shows your employer, um, how much time you spent off duty in the truck but not driving, actively driving and then on duty, not driving that day. It also tells your employer where you're hauling to and from, where your main office is, the date, your tractor and trailer numbers, and what you're hauling. This book is to be filled out on paper as well as electronically, most are going electronically, but if the electronic version goes down, you will have to fill out your paper logbook for seven days before that, and then the day you're also off. You are to hand this book to police in case you get pulled over. For these reasons, the detail that is required in filling out this book is so, so, so important. Um, luckily, Mr. Williams has taught us everything we need to know about this book, and he has gone over it so many times. The very first time outside this semi, I've learned how to shift, I was absolutely terrified. I had never shifted before in my life, the only truck I had ever been in was a dump truck, and watching my dad do that, I was like, oh my gosh, how do you do this? But um, Mr. Williams was really supportive, he was eager to jump in and help me, um, and he taught me how to shift, and now I can do it with a, like, in so well, I don't even know how to do it like that. Um, for us, we use RPM for the sound of the truck to shift, the RPMs will need to be around fifteen hundred when we're shifting. He's also taught us how to double clutch, is, which is what we have to do at the state test. Um, to double clutch, you're just gonna have to push the clutch in twice, and you're gonna have the, it's, it's really confusing, you have to push the clutch in while you're pulling it back into neutral, and then pushing it in again, and then shifting it back into your next gear. Um, and then another thing he's taught us is how to downshift. And then, not a lot of people have learned to downshift yet because it's more of the experience, more of the experienced people have learned to downshift, but this, I think it's next week, he said we're all learning how to downshift. Um, so I'll say we're in fourth year, for example, and so if we want to downshift, he's going to tell us to blow the accelerator and then push the clutch in, and then we're gonna shift into neutral while letting, shift into neutral while letting off the clutch, and then we're gonna have to push the accelerator in so the RPM line up just right. And then after they do this, we'll have to let off the accelerator and push the clutch back in while moving the gear shift up into the left to get the semi into third. Mr. Williams has also taught us how to straight line back and back around a turn. To straight line back, we line the trailer up straight in the parking lot. Then we push the clutch in, move the gear to shift to neutral while getting off the clutch, then pushing the clutch back in and moving the gear shift all the way to the left and up to get into reverse. Then we will slowly release the clutch until it's all the way out and begin backing up. Mr. Williams has taught us just to barely move the wheel, so just so your wheels don't turn until your sta- trailer stays straight behind you. And then he's also taught us how to back around a turn, um, it looks easy, it's not.
You think Tom could teach me to do that? Very good.
Um, so to back around a, back around a turn, you're gonna do the same thing you do to back up straight, but then once you get close to the turn, you have to turn the wheel in the opposite direction, so if you want the trailer to go left, you have to turn the wheel right, and if you wanna go, if you want the trailer to go right, you have to turn the wheel left.
Yeah, I'll take it.
We have also learned about the CDL pre-trip, a pre-trip is what you do before you start driving, you check your cabin trailer, just to make sure everything's safe and okay to drive. Um, the pre, the pre-trip inspection requires you to check your lights, tires, engine, steering components, oil, power steering, and coolant levels, as well as your mirrors, fuel tank, air hose, electrical lines, fifth wheel components, landing gear, tandem release, trailer lights, heater, defroster, windshield wipers, seatbelt, emergency equipment, horns, and brakes. Mr. Williams has been an excellent teacher to everyone in this class, he's taught us all things we would have never known without him. He cares about his students and is quick to help when we have problems and questions about the truck. He tells us real-life stories about things that could happen while out on the road and how to handle these situations. He is the perfect teacher for this class, and I think all of his students would agree. I do have one complaint though, that Tyler has already touched on, um, and that is the range course. So we don't have a range course, so it can hinder us getting our CDL, um, but it's just confusing because Park Heritage, I know this is our first year, but Park Heritage does have five students, two semis, and two range courses, and we do have sixteen students, one semi, and no range course. But we do take the time on Sundays to come out here, and he takes his time to come out here and help us, so we greatly appreciate that. But all in all, please take into consideration about the range course, please, um, and thank you for your time.
Nice job.
Good evening, everybody, faculty, staff, board members, I'm here to talk about the CDL and what it means to me and everybody else. Uh, after high school, I plan on going into trucking field, I'm not sure yet, but I plan on it. So college is at my route, so when this CDL program popped up, it was really in my liking, and everybody that's in it is just great, and the teachers are great, and everything that I've learned, there's a lot of different things to it as they've all said. There's a hundred little things you gotta check, and there's three different tests you gotta take just to get your permit, and then you gotta go take the state test, which is beyond hard, but we're working through it, and it's been great, we have great teachers. Tom, Tom's been in the industry for over forty-five years, and he's taught us a lot of great things, and he tells us right out of the book, and he lets us know what we don't know and what we need to know, and everything that we do know. And like they've touched on, we don't have a course yet, but when we do, it'll excel us a lot farther, and if we can get the simulator in within the next week or two, it'll show us how to do the backing and all the different things, parallel parking, there's a lot of different things to it, but we will get through it and we will work through it. Thanks for your time and thanks for letting me speak.
I'll share a couple thoughts, um, then we can ask questions, uh, first, well done, uh, love hearing from our students. For Tom Williams' name several times, he could not be here tonight because he's coaching basketball, something else he does for us. Um, I also want to uh, give a shout out uh, to Mr. Jeff Doss, Jeff, can you raise your hand, please? This class, there you go. This, this class does not happen uh, without uh, Jeff as well, uh, we have long-term plans, Tom's doing this, but we're blessed to have Tom with the years of experience. Tom will do this for a few years and have future plans, uh, our goal is for uh, Jeff Doss to be able to take over this program. We are blessed to be able to have that transition, um, and again, thank Jeff, this is not his only job that he does here as well. I did make a note, do you, did anybody hear that we need a range course? Uh, so, uh, we're working on it, but appreciate our students uh, advocating. Uh, I remember when uh, we first started talking about this program, um, we were a little hesitant, not because of the lack of, of need or we, we knew how many students Park Heritage had, we didn't know how many we would get, and so I'd come over and talked to Amanda, she said, no, I think we'll get enough, and I'm like, oh, you sure, and then went over another time, and she surveyed some kids, we got ten, we got eleven, we got sixteen, uh, so this program will continue to expand, uh, it's at a half-day program, our goal is to have full day, and then eventually even uh, have a goal of offering adult ed classes as well, so uh, I love hearing from our students, and again, uh, just grateful for all the work that everybody's put in and for your approval of this program. Any questions?
Appreciate all you speaking tonight, it's hard to get over, I enjoy hearing about the program and the positives and the challenges you're having, so, thank you very much.
Guys did a great job, it's not easy uh, to get in front of a group, I don't know if you knew that you were on camera as well, okay, just, probably should have told you that beforehand.
Maybe not.
Yeah, no, uh, yeah, you did a great job, and what I, I love seeing and hearing, uh, yeah, we learn from books, this is different. They'll tell you that, hands-on learning, real world, care. While kids aren't going to college, and we shouldn't force that on them, so giving a balanced approach that we can provide at North Putnam by providing more opportunities for more kids for these type of experience to be career-ready, as soon as they walk out these doors, that's what they deserve. So when we have administrators and a school board in our community that supports that, this is amazing and we're not done, so thank you again for what you did tonight, I really appreciate it.
Kudos to you guys.
Well done, give him another hand. So here's the moment, you choose to stay for the rest of the board meeting, uh, or you can leave, uh, your choice, parents, same for you, so.
Who's wisely.
Yeah, we'll, we'll pause for a minute before we continue with the rest of the agenda. Amanda, do you wanna, I think you have a couple of things you wanna. Amanda, you gotta be on camera.
What?
You gotta be up here. Could have told you that too. Yeah, should have told you that too.
I just wanted to highlight a few things that are going on at the high school, it's been a phenomenal first few months, um, so many successes in so many different areas that I want to point out, and I've got them all on my phone, I apologize. Um, first of all, our MFA food science team placed tenth in the nation. Um, they earned an all-expenses-paid trip in January to Atlanta for the international production and processing expo. Chase Abden tied for ninth overall in the nation. And they did a phenomenal job to go downtown and watch it and watch Mrs. Skurvin in action with the kids, it's, it's incredible. The things that they do, I think, my daughter is in parliamentary procedure and she's learning how to speak publicly. Clearly, I did not take that, so to watch them do those things just blows your mind. Uh, we have the race car, I was able to drive the uh, team to Lafayette a month and a half ago, uh, there were twenty teams. We were in our first-ish year, because we only did half the year last year, and out of twenty teams, we placed fourth. The top three teams were all from the same school, he focuses just on that. So to be fourth amongst all of these teams is incredible, uh, Mr. Davis does a great job, uh, we're getting a second car and adding a second team. Uh, the kids are so excited, and it's, again, to watch them with their computers dialing in with the comput- you know, what the go-kart's doing, I'm just standing there going, I can't even find, you know, the pictures on my phone, and they've got computers and they're, you know, uh, controlling the, the speed of the race cars, so that was exciting. Uh, we just finished the theater production of The Importance of Being Earnest, we got to use our new lighting and sound during that. Uh, Mr. Bond, they, they work, then the kids work incredibly hard, um, in the theater, so that was a great production. Uh, Fall Sports just wrapped up, we had three students qualified for regionals and cross-country. Jenna Day, Brooklyn Sutherland, and Corbin Connor, so Mr. Loops and Mrs. Hensley, thank you for your time that you spend with the kids. There's mornings where I'll pull up at seven in the morning, and I'm like, oh no, someone's chasing me, no, that's a student practicing for cross-country, so.
There is a dog somewhere nearby, we won't point any fingers at somebody that sometimes chases our kids too, so.
Okay, but we appreciate your work.
Don't know who that is. Yep.
We were supposed to go there with the cross-country mascots until they took the ride in the police car up to Bainbridge, and I said, we gotta stop it. They've been in the entryway house. Thank you for your time and the effort it was to give. We have students, our art students are working on new murals for the building, I'm gonna set these here for you to look through, you won't believe the talent that we have in this building, um, we're gonna start uh, painting them here in the next week or so, um, picking areas for them to go, but I just want to give you a few samples of those. Um, and we're constantly looking for new opportunities for the kids, obviously the CDL was one of them, but if you know Scott Spencer at all, you know he runs this building. He, his mind is unbelievable, and the things that he comes up with and the way that he can make um, schedules work so that we can offer new ag, possible ag opportunities, new um, uh, finance opportunities, things like that, uh, is incredible, and, and he's been great. Um, this year we have, last year we had one student graduate with their associate's degree, right now, we have four that are already there, and we'll have, I think we said four more possibly that could cross that line by graduation, so it's just great things happening.
I understand how important that is, again, that we did that with the approval of this board, um, the student last year did go on to college, but she went as a junior. Uh, for this year, some may go to college, they may have an associate's degree, and they're good to go, some are gonna take that, so it's, furthers their education, but it also saves either the family or the kids a lot of money, so really proud of that.
Yeah, and then I want to thank the four kids that came to speak, um, they represented the, the CDL program very, very well. Um, there's just not enough words for Jeff Doss and, and Tom Williams, Tom gives his weekends up, the kids come up here and they drive around in the parking lot. Um, he'll tell you that five of them are going next week to get their permit, um, so that's an exciting time, they have to hold their permits. I've got one graduating in December, and I, I think she can, um, but just a lot of really good things going on at the high school, we appreciate your support um, and, and can't wait to share the new and exciting things we have coming.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna pass these around. You guys can look.
All right.
Yep.
So we'll move on. Um, we didn't have anybody sign up to speak if you've, um... We'll just move on with the, uh, consent agenda. So...
Yeah, I would, um, yeah, thank you. Uh, I just highlighted for, uh, the consent agenda. I wanna, uh, point out, um, that, um, we are recommending in that consent agenda that Summer Ramsey become, uh, dean at Bainbridge. Uh, this will be a cost-neutral move. There will, it's, uh, we are able to reduce, uh, one position. But, uh, Summer's currently an instructional coach. Uh, she'll be able to continue, uh, working with, uh, Jess with those skills and balancing those responsibilities. But, um, Bainbridge is a, a complex building. Um, it's got seven grade levels. It's got over four hundred students. Uh, and they need support. Uh, and Summer is the perfect candidate. I appreciate Jess going through and working through how to make that happen. So just really proud, uh, to be able to have her a part of that and agenda. So recommend for approval.
Anybody have any other questions or discussions on the consent agenda? Motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second it.
A motion by Nathan, second by Joni. All those in favor of the consent agenda? Six. Um, we'll move on to F, which is approval of administrator raises.
Yeah, I wish, you know, these were in different order. I prefer to do the teachers first, but we'll get there. Uh, so there's several things I wanna point out, um, for the administrator, uh, compensation. One, it follows the same exact model as our teachers. There is nothing, uh, there is no pay increase this year. It's insurance only. Uh, for those that take it and then next year is the, uh, increased compensation. The second thing that I would like to point out is, is the same philosophical approach, um, with, um, trying to address a level of compression and competitiveness around our areas. Um, for example, our athletic director is the lowest-paid athletic director, uh, in, in this area, including our conference. Um, and so, um, that needs to be addressed. Uh, there's many districts that pay for full, uh, administrative insurance packages. We do not and have not. Um, so again, just focusing on being more competitive, uh, all, there's also times, uh, in the past where if you see an administrator get a, a different level of compensation, most of the time that's because, uh, it's either a, a change in responsibility or a change, uh, in the number of days in their contract. So we wouldn't want others to, to work for the same amount for the same number of days. So that's, um, that's the administrative package this year. The actual compensation is actually, uh, lower for most than it has been in the past.
All right, any other questions?
I just have, uh, I, I know that, you know, um, you've answered a lot of our questions on this.
Yep.
Behind the scenes and, um, there's a lot that goes into it, um, a- about the raises and how that they are brought forth and how you compare it to other places in which sometimes so many, for instance, Rodney might've only gotten two hundred days one time and now he's getting two sixty. So a lot of that goes into play. So I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve administrator raises. We have a second?
Second it.
A motion by Heather, second by Joni. All those in favor? Five, all those opposed?
We do, uh, have one, uh, person abstaining. He has a family member that we're voting on, so should not be voting on this part, so...
Um, next would be the approval, uh, motion passes. Five. Uh, next is approval of the non-certified raises.
Yeah, again, it, it, it's on the agenda for this year, but it's the same as, um, for teachers and administrators. The pay increase goes on, into effect next year. Uh, again, continuing to try to be competitive, uh, with those around us. There's a couple things that I'll point out, uh, on this in particular. Um, in that for our instructional si- assistants, it's fifty cents. Uh, our custodians are no longer on here. Um, so that's why you won't see them listed. They're, uh, SSC employees, not North Putnam employees. Um, the same will be for our maintenance. It's the same amount, but again, it applies for next year. You'll see that our bus drivers are five dollars a day. Uh, that's, we have one district nearby that's been a little bit more aggressive. So we're trying to stay competitive so we don't lose drivers. We've been fairly aggressive in this category over the past few years. There's a couple other things you'll see with the bus, uh, that's specific to the transportation. Um, we do have one two-tier route, um, and that's all we have. Every now and then we talk about more. It just doesn't work out with the number of hours it will take for our bus driver. So that particular route will get additional compensation. Uh, we've increased our, recommending an increase for our ECA, um, pay as well. Um, and then we are also, I think that is it. And then again, I, but, but you'll see cafeteria work on there. That's, that's not for us to approve. That's for Chartwell's to approve. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
All right, any other questions or comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the non-certified raises.
Motion by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by Zach. Uh, all those in favor? Six. We'll move on to the approval of non-certified staff health insurance premium.
Yeah, it's again the same approach. Really, this is an area for health insurance, um, for our administrators, for, for non-certified staff, for, uh, many of our staff that we've just fallen behind on. This doesn't solve the issue. Uh, it takes a step in that direction. So, um, we, again, tried to have the same philosophical approach for the employee groups this year. So we, we really needed to address, uh, insurance, um, so we could, we could start that catch-up process.
Anybody else have any questions or discussion? Motion?
Make a motion to approve the non-certified staff health insurance premiums.
Second.
Yep.
Joni with the motion, Heather with the second. All those in favor? Six. And we have seeking permission to advertise bids.
Your package are, you know, at that time of year to advertise bids for, uh, new buses. Uh, Tanya, is there anything to add to that?
Typically on that, we'll give one bid, maybe two. Uh, so, and so we'll let you know, we'll bring that to the table once, uh, we have those bids, uh, and be able to share what bids we got if we got more than one this year.
All right. We have a motion?
Make a motion to approve permission to advertise for fuel bits.
I said, bless it's fuel.
I saw you looking over here. Like, what, what did I do?
I was thinking that too. It's the best fuel. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, so time of year, every, our potential for the fuel bits, yes.
Nathan has a motion on fuel bid and Ron seconded it.
Oh, Joni did.
Oh, Joni seconded it, sorry.
Ron just had a question.
Yeah. So motions, second. All those in favor? Six. All right, we're gonna move on to the public hearing on the terms of the collective bargaining agreement. Anybody have any questions about the contract as presented?
Oh, yeah, I'll have some comments though. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanna, yeah, this has been a, uh, was a very, um, different approach to our contract, uh, teacher contract, but very needed. Um, one thing that we did after last year's contract, last year we made, tried to make a little bit of a tweak to compression. Admittedly, it was very little. We had a three-tier approach. So years one through nine, got a certain amount, then we just tiered that up. But that's a recognition that there is a compression issue. Last year, may, a tiny, tiny bit of difference. This year, uh, the, the union and the, um, their team brought to three specific goals, uh, for us to have a scale, for us to continue to address compression and for us to address insurance. Um, we were able to achieve all three goals. Um, we, we do have a scale now, uh, that helps people see where they're at and where they can move. And for when we hire people, it's easy, it's much easier to place. So appreciate all the work that was put into that. Um, I'll skip to insurance. Insurance is applied this year. Again, we are, we were just way behind in the percentage and the amount we're putting, uh, on teachers' insurance. And it, it makes it tough, um, because we could, if, when you go to negotiate and, um, it, half of our teachers take insurance, where do you wanna put the money? Well, you wanna put it to where everybody's at. Um, but then that causes us to fall further behind because everybody doesn't take our insurance. Well, sometimes they don't take it because we didn't cover enough. So we felt, took a significant step, uh, this year. There could be more work to be done in the future. Um, and, and the big one was compression. So with the scale, there's a six hundred dollar increment in our scale. Uh, that six hundred dollar increment through the scale drove, uh, the raise higher for those that, for many that were further ahead in the scales with their years of experience. So there's a, the minimum on the early years of a four hundred dollar, uh, increase. And on the high end, there's up to five thousand dollars and one teacher even higher than that, just because they were so compressed over so many years. What I'll say is even though we made some progress, it's not enough. Uh, it was difficult for me to sit at the table and say, this is what we can do. But we believe we're putting a plan in the future to do two things. Over the next few years, continue to find cost efficiencies. So when we're in year three of the contract, not year three of the contract, when we're in, get to year three and it's time to negotiate, we need to have the dollars so we can go further in that scale. So it, it's not an opportunity to say, everybody gets a thousand dollars. What's the bucket of money to where we can expand that scale and go from six to eight hundred dollars? And that begins to make a more significant difference to those that have been mo- most compressed. So, and it really closes the gap on surrounding schools. We are no longer the, um, lowest-paid school district in the county. Uh, we have surpassed other schools. Uh, we have closed the gap. But again, um, I wanna do more and I recognize, uh, the need to do that. So we've spent a lot of time. I can't thank Tanya enough for the number of times I asked to run something different to help me understand where we're at. And, um, so just appreciate that. I wanna thank, uh, the union, um, for the time that they spent. Um, the vote was almost unanimous. And I also wanna thank the teachers that have brought some concerns to me. Um, even through frustrations, I'm not one that is opposed to hearing frustrations, um, that tells us that we have to do more work in the future. So I am committed to doing that.
All right, and I appreciate the work that, that you all put into this with the union and the negotiation process. Um, I know you were really trying to move it forward.
Yeah.
To get more fair, less compression, so... Um, we have a motion or discussion?
I'd also like to thank Dr. Lomay and, and the negotiating committee of the union. I know Dust and I had some conversations and, and have seen some holes and...
Yep.
You know, I, I truly feel like the, the board needs to hold themselves accountable to fill some of them holes in as quick a order as we can. And, um, with that being said, I will make a motion to approve the bargaining, collective bargaining agreement with the teachers.
I'll second it.
A motion, Ron second, Joni. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
We had taken a vote.
All those in favor? Six. You still wanna take it?
Um, I'd just comment, um, the teachers that did present concerns. Um, I appreciate that. I have been on that side before. I've had to have that discussion and write that sort of discussion before. So I appreciate you coming forward with those concerns. Um, we can't know everything at one time. Uh, but the confidence to, to come forward and present those in an organized way is appreciated. We're gonna do the best we can.
I know it is frustrating to work through all that. So thank you for, um, those who work on the committee and those who brought challenges forward as well. Thank you for your patience and it's a lot of frustration, but thank you.
All right.
Okay, we already voted, sorry.
So we can move on to superintendent report.
Yeah, I'll, again, thank, uh, our students, uh, for the amazing presentation. And again, I, I do know that we need a course, so I will not forget that. That's burned in my brain now. Um, and again, look forward to seeing that simulator. Um, just wanna share a few things about my day today. Uh, I got the opportunity, um, to sit down with our high school team and Amanda articulated a few things that are going on. But it mentioned Scott Spencer's name as being so important. Over the next one to two years, we have the opportunity to add four more AP classes, two more dual cri- dual credit classes, one additional pathway that provides hands-on opportunity and greatly expand our work-based learning. That doesn't happen by accident. That's well thought out, uh, and takes a lot of time. I also had the, the time to discuss with our high school and middle school, uh, a new, uh, Cougar Day of Caring. Where all of our high school students, uh, and middle school students, uh, will have the opportunity to volunteer at our schools and our community. Um, so more to come on that. Um, I also had the time to, um, meet with our two elementary principals and Rodney. Uh, so Justin Bridgett, uh, to discuss plans for STEM and hands-on opportunities at the elementaries in the future. And to think about what kids from pre-K to K, all the way up to our senior class will begin to experience in North Putnam, not just this year, not just next year, but going forward in the future. And all this is without adding with, uh, additional costs. Now, now, the, the materials cost, but we have other sets of monies to our project to be able to do that. Um, but just amazed at a day to, we're again, balancing frustration with amazing opportunities and giving students and families a reason to be thrilled to be a North Putnam student, to, to, to stay at North Putnam and to bring more families and kids back to our community. That's the goal. Our team, our teachers, our administrators are making it happen. I'm very proud of that.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Simpson?
So one thing I wanna, uh, talk to you about is, uh, a grant that I've been, um, excited to work with, the Castle, um, of Beth Benedict's. Uh, last August, uh, she, uh, called me and said, would you help co-write a grant for literacy? Um, and so we did, um, let's do the trust for learning. Um, and we were awarded that grant. So we're gonna get to bring another opportunity to North Putnam for our younger readers, um, and learners. And, um, we're gonna focus on second grade and with the iLearn and, um, it's gonna be, uh, called the Reading Together, a collaborative approach to embody literacy. We're gonna be able to bring in, um, consult- consultants and workshops and PD for teachers and, and PD and classroom workshops for kids and, um, parents as well. And, uh, have that community support and bring us together for a, a whole literacy collaborative. And so we, um, are excited that the Castle has, has worked with North Putnam so, so well over the past several years with the film, the projects they bring into classrooms. And so we're just very excited to be able to offer this opportunity to our families and, and our students, our teachers. And, um, we'll get this going here shortly. So that's, that's a great partnership with the Castle.
Thank you.
It's great. Um, Tanya?
Getting close. Yeah, Merry Christmas.
That won't ruin Christmas, but... All right, uh, we'll move on to four comments and we'll start with Ron.
Uh, appreciate the students, uh, their, uh, presentation on the CDL program. I mean, it sounds very successful, amazing. And, I mean, you know, that's, that's something that drives, uh, student count. Uh, and, and, you know, the staying involved in our community and I think that's great. Uh, and, and you know, the staying involved in our community and I think that's great. I was a little concerned when Amanda was talking about the race car, 'cause I thought she was gonna say, I got to drive.
I did too, I thought that was the kind, I thought the same.
And she's not in here to enjoy that comment, but I, I, I was thinking, oh, yeah, yes, yeah.
Uh, I thought, wow.
Uh.
We tried to get at this, right?
We did, we did.
But.
I just simply was accommodating and meeting them.
I mean, it's uh, Mr. Loons and the, and Mrs. Hensley with the cross-country team, uh, I mean, appreciate your efforts there. Uh, you know, there's a lot of good things going on at North Putnam, but we, we, we still have some holes that we need to be mindful of, so. But thank everybody uh that puts in the long hours and dedicated to North Putnam.
I appreciate you shouting out cross-country again. Uh, we are, part of their cross-country course has been uh messed up, so we are working with uh Art and the cross-country crew to uh come up with a new course. So excited because it has a chance to go through the woods and we'll do whatever we need to to make that uh the best course we can. So we wanna host some bigger events.
Good.
I wanted to say, uh, state program at the middle school, high school was fantastic. A lot of veterans here and active military personnel, so it was wonderful. And again, thank you for providing us that Bainbridge, uh, for the Veterans Day programs. We're grateful about that, so thank you very much. And thanks for us country going wonderfully, um, I had to show up there with the grant, can't wait to hear more about it. For our FFA, our successes, doing such a wonderful job. Thank you students for being here, enjoyed listening to each one of the other students and how the program's going. Thank you. Thank you teachers for being here and all of course, thank you.
Heather?
Um, it's the same pretty much as Joni, as CDL program, I'm super excited to hear about that. I think that's what we need, that we have also two girls that are gonna do it, are doing it, and hopefully maybe they can get more next year. Um, but we're getting the simulator, sounds like next week.
Yep.
Um, so that will be exciting and maybe we can take a look at that next month when it comes in. Um, also the FFA program, I'm very glad to hear how well they did.
All right, we'll jump over to Nathan.
Yeah, um, students that came in, thank you very much. I'm not sure that I could have done, no, I'll put it a different way. I could not have done as good a job at your age as you just did. Um, furthermore, the transmission budget would have had to have been bigger for that truck had I been driving at your age. Um, I think I'd have a manual right now, but think about it. Um, so we're all really, really excited about that. And uh, you guys were standing out there the other day when I pulled in, uh, to speak to the seniors the other day on finance and all of you greeted me and I was probably buried in my phone or something checking emails, but it's good to see you guys out there. Um, I assume the construction program's going fantastically still?
Middle school it is, yeah, we got additional uh funds and supplies to continue to build more picnic tables and uh we're going to be building a barn and auctioning that off that will provide funds all back to the construction program.
Great.
Yep.
I like it. I'm just excited about that. Um, I would echo what you said uh about the Veterans Day programs. I was able to make it to the middle school and high school program uh followed by Rochdale, couldn't make it to Bainbridge. Um, they're great, uh, just fantastic events like usual. Um, good to see the kids having a good time, so. I think that's about it.
Zach?
We'll go on last, there's not a whole lot more I can say, so just uh let Mark wrap this thing up.
I just wanted to think about going last, I mean, I just get to echo what everybody else said. Um, so thank you all for showing up. Um, you know, you can tell that people care about something when they're sitting here in front of you. So we appreciate that. Um, and especially with the students showing up, you can tell how much they care about that program, you can hear it. Um, and uh, Mr. Dos, kudos for helping out with that. And uh, give Mr. Williams our, our regards to, if you would please, tomorrow. Um, just uh, thank you for a good, good meeting tonight. And I um hope, I hope that um with all the explanation, you hear where we come from, you know, you know where we're at when we're doing the voting and uh just appreciate the opportunity to be able to say it in front of you, so. With that?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Zach, all those in favor? Six.
Thank you.
Really good.
Amanda?
I'm sorry. I was looking against the wall. I didn't even look in the chair. I guess we gotta give him a hand.